Well, good evening, everyone. We'd like to call our Monday, September 13th, 2021 Fayetteville City Council meeting to order. We are again still in the process of renovation of the council chambers. So at this time, we will have the invocation. Acts that one who would like to say the invocation, we'll go with Pastor Davis, if he would. Pastor Councilmember Chris Davis.
Our great and mighty Father, it is in the name of Jesus Christ that we come before you tonight. We thank you for this opportunity to come together for the sake of the people. We thank you for the honor of leading, of being chosen to serve on behalf of the citizens of this great city. God now endows us with wisdom and that knowledge and understanding. Help us to come together in the spirit of unity, not for self-service, but for selfless service, so that we might move this city forward in the right direction. We thank you right now for a leadership of every type and kind in this nation, which represents your authority, continuing to protect our men and women who are serving this nation all around the world, as well as those who are caretakers, law enforcement, and every other aspect of community service. We thank you for these things. In Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Counselor, at this time, if we could stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 4.0 are the announcements. I know have a couple of special announcements that we're awaiting. In the meantime, is, okay, all right. This time, we will have a special presentation to one who has served the city well in our finances, Ms. Tracy Broyles and her family, what they make their way in to council, temporary council chambers. Ms. Broyles.
Hello.
Well, now you have family and some other special guests with you. We'll give time for everyone to come in.
I think they made them all stay out there.
Made them all stay, all right. All right. Senator DeViere here?
Yes, sir. He is coming up as we speak. If I could just take a moment of privilege as well. In addition to working with Tracy, when I came to Fayetteville back in 2004, a little known fact, I actually was in an office adjacent to hers and or Elizabeth's in finance when I first started. And a little bit, I know some, it was almost 20 years later, I'd be her neighbor as well. So it's a really distinct.
Can't get away from you.
I've been able to work with her for this period of time. And I think Senator DeViere is getting ready to come in just about now. Mayor and council, present to you Senator Kirk DeViere.
Senator, how you doing? Their discretion, sir. You know, we follow state guidance here, so it's however.
Is that what you do, Mr. Mayor?
Mostly.
It's an honor to be here. Anytime you can present this award, the highest in the state, to anyone, it's always an honor. This one is, is special as well. And I've got, I've had the honor of presenting these to a few people in the community. This one is special, though. It's been a lot of time with Tracy before I was on council. And while I was on council, I think she was tired of me. I think I was like Mr. Dawkins with the budget and continued to ask multiple questions. I think the mayor and I spent lots of time in her office going over things. But you were, you have and are and have been an asset to this community and to this city. And as we look around the city and see all the things that have been done by this council and by previous councils, financially, you made a lot of them happen. You made the magic happen. And Doug would say that multiple times over, and so would previous managers. So there's not a doubt in my mind about that. But it's great to be able to present this to you, the highest honor that can be awarded in the state of North Carolina by the governor. And so I'm going to read it real quick, if I can read it, see if I can see it. I'm getting old and I can barely see anymore, it seems like. But it's the state of North Carolina, Roy Cooper, Governor, reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Tracy L. Broyles. I do by these presents confer the order of the long-leaf pine, with the rank of ambassador extraordinary, privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is a special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast in selected company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the long-leaf pine, the summer land where the sun does shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the Old North State. Signed, Roy Cooper, August 31st, 2021. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Well, thank you so much, everybody. It's especially moving that Senator DeViere is the one to give this award, because I think of all of the things I've done in my 30 years at the city, probably the most challenging and the most exciting project was the construction financing for Segra Stadium and our funding model. And we worked hand in hand on that. So this is greatly appreciated. I appreciate all of you and my former coworkers here. Just very excited and moved to have received this. Thank you very much.
So Ms. Tracy, I'll ask you again in front of them. So this really means that we now get the checkbook, right?
Well, Kelly, Kelly. Kelly and Jay and Doug may have some constraints on that, but you're in good hands with those three.
All right. Well, we'll keep, we'll keep fighting and digging for money. Thank you. Thank you for the years of service. I mean, even, you know, over the last eight years that we've been here, it gets a little tense when you're trying to, you know, to take a, take a penny and make it a dollar. And we're thinking one thing, but you have the professional capabilities to tell us what's possible and what's realistic. But sometimes, we don't like to hear that. But other times, we know, as we look at the city's financial shape, we're certainly in good shape because of you and the team that you put together. So look great, look forward to great things for you in the future. And if Doug harasses you, you just called me, and I'll, we'll send the council over there to pull him back in. But thank you and enjoy yourself.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor, as well, as Mike recognized as well, we have Mr. Thompson with us, a retiree, as well as Jake Reinstein as well, that's joined us and all of our team.
Councilman Hare, you waving or you? But thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
All right, council, as we move, we have proclamation prepared for the FSU Gear Up program. The reasons follows. Whereas the gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate program, Gear Up, is a federally funded competitive grant program designed to increase the number of low-income students who are prepared to enter and succeed in post-secondary education. Whereas Gear Up serves low-income minority and disadvantaged students and their families from underserved communities who might be the first person in their family to go to college. Whereas Gear Up provides six- or seven-year grants to states and partnerships to deliver support and resources to students and their families, starting no later than the seventh grade or middle school through high school, and onward to fulfill their dreams of obtaining post-secondary education. Whereas Gear Up is built around public-private partnerships enlisting the formidable resources of the government, business community, and community groups to support low-income students as they prepare to enter and to be successful in college. Says, whereas now therefore, I Mitch Kovit, Mayor of the City of Fayetteville, behalf of the Fayetteville City Council, do honorably proclaim the week of September 20th, 2021, in honor of Gear Up. So this sounds like a great program for our local partner, Fayetteville State. And so we look forward to great success for the children of this community, for this opportunity that Gear Up grant provides. So thank you to Chancellor of Fayetteville State and your team for a great job on that. At this time, I saw Mr. Scott Bullitt come in and update us on our COVID status. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. I'm the guy who brings in the dark cloud with me, unfortunately. But there is some bright sides to things. Today's day 547 of our state of emergency. Seventeen days are now passed since the county issued its order, and 24 days since the mayor added the Fifth Amendment to our state of emergency with mask mandates. I think if I'm correct, and I would have to have Cape Fear Valley keep me honest, but I believe they have about 120 or so inpatients right now with COVID. If I'm off, I'm only off maybe upwards of 10 or down of 10, but it's somewhere in that neighborhood. The big point I want to make that you kind of have to draw out, there's been a lot of discussions about it under the breath of a lot of folks, both medical and non-medical. Back on January the 9th, we had a daily peak of 11,708 cases in a single day. Supposedly, that was the great spike. Well, Saturday, we had 11,337 over the weekend. Some are saying, is that indicative of the spike of the current cycle that we're in? I don't have any answers for you. All I can say is, it's mighty high. And they really stand out. About 400 cases separated, and that washes out statistically. So let's keep our fingers crossed that we might see some deflection downward as we go forward. When I was with you a couple of weeks ago, I mentioned that Orange County had a little formula going where they were about 3.2% of positive cases out of all that they have coming in. And I'll throw something else out, just to encourage the vaccinations, that there's a little county down east called Hyde County, and maybe some of you have been to Ocracoke, North Carolina. If you have, you've been to Hyde County. Hyde County has 5,000 residents. They have no hospital. They have three schools, one of which is private, and six volunteer fire departments. No hospital. The nearest hospital is almost an hour away. They are 8.7% positive versus our number at this hour, which is upwards of 14.7. But they have a very high vaccination rate. Their vaccination rate as of today is 63% partial and 59% full. So that deserves an applause. So even a very small, under-resourced area can do the same effort that Wake and Durham and Orange are doing. So it's just, it's teamwork, and it's the community coming together. So we'll continue to keep pushing and banging the drum for vaccinations, because literally, and all of you around this table know, that's the best that we have at the moment. And I will try to answer any questions you might have.
Well, Mr. Bullitt, don't have questions. Well, we do have a question. I know the numbers that you gave, the numbers as of yesterday, Mike Nagowski text, 125 inpatients, so you were pretty close, 22 in ICU, all vented, and 85% of those hospitalized are unvaccinated. And since January, 94% of the deaths have been by unvaccinated. So those are the statistics, but you were pretty close. Councilmember Waddell? Oh, Hare, and then Waddell?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, we're starting to hear a little conversation about the booster shots. Someone like myself that was fully covered in, with vaccines in February of this year, what do we look like as far as moving closer to citizens getting boosters, especially those that have had it at least as long as I have?
I suspect that you and I both have heard a lot of pro and con discussion. The facts are kind of hard to tease out on the world stage. The world is screaming about the developed countries such as our own, going to a third shot, which is not in keeping with one shot, at least getting to the rest of the uncivilized world or the, the non-Western world. That's a higher-stage political argument. What I, the only thing I can tell you factually is that my shop has been planning, just like we did for the original shots, one and two. And we're just waiting for a light to come on and a thumb up to say, let's do it the way we've done it before. I can't speak for the Health Department, but I know they're planning as well.
Right.
But that suspense date is moving around.
Yes.
We had heard mid-September. Well, lo and behold, here we are. Now we're hearing rumors and rumblings of October. I don't want to speculate.
What have you, do you have the numbers or proximate numbers on where we are as far as being vaccinated in Cumberland County?
Oh, yes, sir. Percentage-wise, we're in that range of 60% partially and 52% completely vaccinated. About 60% have had at least one shot, or they're partially vaccinated, and 52% are completely vaccinated. And that changes every day. But we've got some places that are, as I've said before, upper in the 80s and so forth. And that's something that we're striving for, and we'll, we'll continue to work at trying to get there.
Sir, thank you, Councilman Hare. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At our last meeting, I had a couple of questions, and it was indicated that those would probably be best posed to either Dr. Ms. Jennifer Green or Mr. Nagowski. Have we extended an invitation for them to come before us so that we can have a more expanded dialogue regarding the conversations surrounding the pandemic?
Mr. Manager, I guess that'd be you. I have not talked to Mike Nagowski about it. I do recall, but I think we do probably need to follow Dr. Green. I did mention to her, but I'm not sure if we confirmed anything. But that is a good reminder, so. Ms. Book?
Thank you, sir.
We'll leave on some good news.
Okay.
Our good news is, our hospital system is nothing short of incredible. Rex and Raleigh's having problems. They're getting out the tents tonight, and they're not opening a brand-new hospital in Holly Springs, because they're afraid that they can't man it. So cheer one for Fayetteville.
All right. Yes, sir. Well, thank you. Look forward to continued positive news. Counsel, at this time, we will go to Councilmember Larry Wright for an announcement.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make an acknowledgement. In my calling today to the city, I spoke with the city executive secretary and found out during our call that today is her 10th year anniversary working with the city. And I said, well, I'm going to say something about that to the council. She is a great asset to our city, and I just wanted to acknowledge that. Thank you for all you do in, behind the scenes. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Wright kind of beat you to the surprise.
I didn't know that's what you was about to say.
I muted his mic.
Oh, see, I didn't even know.
I'm here in Georgia, live TV. There's a thing here, Pam was, has been with us now for 10 years. It was my honor and Karen's. We were instrumental in recruiting her here from Georgia.
And Rebecca.
And Rebecca as well. I didn't see you back there, dear. And could not be more pleased. She is, as you said, sir, the city secretary. That's how she always called herself when she was the clerk in Texas as well, city secretary, not city clerk. But another interesting point is, just like Tracy, she's also my neighbor. So I get the pleasure of living next to her. So Mayor, if you need to make another admonition and a warning to her, you feel free to do so.
You gotta stop stalking this.
But Pam, congratulations on 10 years and hope for 10 more.
Right on time, right on time.
All right, Councilmember Jensen, you got some surprises you want to blow, like Larry, Councilmember Wright?
But I would like to just do a reminder that this Saturday is National Cleanup Day that was completed as a council request. It will start at 8:00 at Segra Stadium. At that time, you can pick up your t-shirts, your gloves, your garbage bags for the cleanup. This is the opportunity for citizens to not only clean up their area, but around their neighborhood, and also just continue to clean up the city of Fayetteville. If there's any questions, they can call 910-433-1329 for any additional information. But this is this Saturday, and I'm hoping that the council and the city of Fayetteville will join in on the National Cleanup Day. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Pro Tem Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to just give an announcement that this weekend is the Greek Festival at the St. Constantine Helen Greek Orthodox Church. Due to COVID, it will be a grab and go, but they will have all the great food, they will have all the pastries, and it is open on Saturday from 11:00 to 8:00, and Sunday from 12:00 to 5:00. So we would love to see you there. And hopefully, next year, you'll be able to see the children dance and the band and everything else. But the food will be ready. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right, council, moving on to item 6.0, is the approval of the agenda. Can we have a motion to?
My hand was red.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you. So no, just wanted to remind the listening audience that there is still funding for the rental assistance, the assistance. I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if it was already mentioned, but I didn't hear it. But please, please take advantage of that assistance while it is there. We don't want you to go without, so that rental assistance is there. The website is FayettevilleCumberlandRAP.com, and the number is 1-888-495-7710. You can apply to your utilities and your rent.
Thank you, Councilwoman. All right. And so item 6.0 is the approval of the agenda. Counsel, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? It's a motion by Councilmember Hare. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes to approve the agenda. Motion carries, Councilmember Ingram?
Green.
Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Item 7.0 is the consent agenda. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm asking that we pull item 7.03 for an up-down vote, and if necessary, some discussion.
Okay. It's a motion by Councilmember Waddell to approve of the exception of 7.03. Any discussion? Okay. The second, that motion is second by Councilmember Ingram. Any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries. All right, Councilmember Waddell?
So on that item, it's discussing the renovations to one of our recreational centers, Dorothea Gilmore, I'm, I might be saying that wrong, the Gilmore Rec Center. And I am aware, we had a discussion, that the funds to outfit this particular rec center are going to be pulled from the, the River Park funding. And I just wanted to make sure that that was, that I'm clear on that, and that that is reinforced during this conversation. For that reason, I'm in support completely of the renovations. I just think that we continue to pull money from that, that pot of money. And if we keep pulling, I'm just not sure on where we're going to end up getting the funds from, because I don't think that we were given any indication that there is another batch of money that's already been identified to complete that project. And so for that reason, I'm not going to be able to, and only for that reason, I'm not going to be able to support this particular item tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Waddell. Mayor Pro Tem?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, good news is, you're going to be able to vote for that, because we did not pull that from the River Park. Is that, it came from the interest? Is that correct, City Manager? The bond premium. Thank you.
So, Mr. Manager, can you clarify that?
Yes, sir. At the meeting, there was, the council decided, Councilmember Waddell, that they would not remove the money from the Cape for River Trail, but instead would authorize staff to transfer the needed money from the bond issuance or bond premium. And that is what is reflected in the CAM and in the Capitol Project Ordinance Amendment as well, that council be voting on, on consent.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Mayor Pro Tem Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With that, I would like to make a motion to approve the adoption of the Capitol Project Ordinance Amendment 2022-33 to appropriate bond premium proceeds to the Dorothy Gilmore Therapeutic Recreation Center project and award the contract for general construction to M Square Construction, Inc.
All right. It's a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Jensen, seconded by Councilmember Dawkins to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Those in favor? Oh, is that discussion? Jennifer, is that discussion? Councilmember Waddell?
No, I, that was, I was, I just pressed the wrong button. Thank you. But my, my pleasure. Thank you for that clarification, Mayor Pro Tem, and my vote is green.
Okay. All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Those in favor? All right, Councilmember Ingram?
Green.
All right, Madam Clerk, that's unanimous. Motion carries. Item 8.01, 2021 Year-End Strategic Performance Report. Ms. Rebecca? Rogers Carter? Oh, Rogers Jackson. Rogers Jackson.
Okay, all right. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Rebecca Jackson, Chief of Staff, Chief Performance Officer. Um, joining me is Mr. Chris Lowery, um, the city's Strategic and Performance Manager, and Ms. Angela Swydens, the Senior Analyst for SPA. Over the last few months, and that's okay if I take my mask off, right? I think you can hear me a little bit better. Pull the microphone? Okay, great. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Over the last few months, uh, these two new staff members have worked, uh, very diligently with the city departments to develop this incredibly comprehensive, uh, annual report. And I am happy to have the honor and privilege to brief you and the community on the city's FY 2021 Annual Performance Report, which is your Agenda Item 8.01. The mayor and the city council and city manager's office provide tremendous support for the strategic planning and performance management efforts. Because of your commitment, we are well on our way to building a culture of high performance and, for our organization that is sustainable. The city is committed to accountability and transparency, and as such, we report that progress throughout the fiscal year to include this, uh, year-end report, which we bring you tonight. Each of the targets for action included in your strategic plan is led by a team of employees who collaborate with community partners and stakeholders to move these projects forward. In short, the results in this report represent the efforts of dedicated public servants who champion your vision for positive and sustainable growth in our community. And this past year was incredibly challenging for any organization, and our city staff rose to the occasion as they responded to a worldwide pandemic and national civic unrest. So we would like to take just a minute and a moment to thank all of them tonight for their public service, because they are the can-doers of this can-do city. So I wanna thank everyone for their public service. Council, my presentation tonight is gonna be very brief, especially considering that there are nearly 100 pages of detail in the report before you. Forgive me as I skip through the report to highlight a few of the significant results that we have seen. The report will also be available on the city's website under the SPA webpage tomorrow, and it is full of, it's chock-full of really good information. If you wanna know what your city is doing and how to build a can-do city, you need to check the full report out tomorrow. Um, this report contains information about the process city council went through to develop the plan, and the report focuses on the city's adopted Fiscal Year 21 Strategic Framework. It dives into the performance of each of the city's six goal areas, including updates on the Targets for Action, or TFA, that show our progress through Fiscal Year 21, and it also shares action plans through the end of Fiscal Year 22, and that is this fiscal year. We are reporting the results of the key performance indicators, the KPSs, or KPIs, and other goal accomplishments. And finally, we're gonna include a performance scorecard in the back of your packet containing four years of trend data and targets. I'm gonna skip through this for a second. I'd like to first draw council's attention to page or slide 17, which shows a rundown, or on your screen. A rundown of where we are on June 30th for the 15 Targets for Action. The Target for Action scope, teams, partners, community outcomes, and action plans that are highlighted are all included in your report and are associated, um, in the Associated Goal Section. Of the 15 TFA, we had one action plan, or employer of choice, TFA, that was completed in the mid-year. I think you'll remember that discussion from your retreat. It is moving forward now as operational. Six TFA action plans for Fiscal Year 21 were complete and are continuing as TFA for Fiscal Year 22. We had six TFA action plans for FY 21 that were slightly behind schedule at year-end, and they are also continuing in FY 22. And additionally, for FY 22, we had two brand-new TFA, and even though this is a Fiscal Year 21 year-end report, we wanted to include all of the action plans moving forward into Fiscal Year 22 to highlight the incredible planning, the investment, and the impact that the city goals, the city goals and the strategic plan has had for our community. Uh, slider page 18 contains a city snapshot, which really highlights the city's reach into the community. We use this, um, in our community, um, events, um, and briefings. So for our city population of 2,008, or more than 2,000, uh, and 8,000, we had 199, or more than 199,000 calls for service in our E911 Center. We had about 23,000, uh, fire department calls for service, six, uh, 36,000 Priority One calls for service for police. We had sixty blighted structures demolished. We had almost, uh, 6,000 tons of recycling collected. We, of course, annually collect household waste, um, from 60, almost 62,000, uh, residents. We had almost 300,000 implanted and deplan passengers for the Fayetteville Regional Airport. 1.7 million fast, um, fast, uh, fixed route passengers, um, and so forth. So this is just a really good snapshot, and I think it highlights the city's reach, again, into the community. And now we're gonna start with the goal areas just real briefly. Um, Goal One is, of course, safe and secure community, and that's up first. Um, just to briefly cover a few highlights, uh, for Goal One, um, I'd like to focus, I think, on KPI. And the data shows that we are well above the national average for a citizen satisfaction with overall quality of fire protection and rescue services. So when compared to the last few years, our fire department calls for services are down this, um, in FY 21, and primarily that's due to COVID quarantine. Our loss-save ratio is at 94.39%, which means that all of our calls we made, um, in all of the fire calls for service, that we averaged 94.39%. Um, we saved an average of 94.39% of the property value. The number of active community watch groups have increased 15% since fiscal year 18. Traffic collisions decreased by 10% over fiscal year 19, and we experienced a 17% decrease in total crime over the last three years. Providing for a safe and secure community means that we're gonna need to engage the public as well as respond to those emergencies. The fire department held a youth camp, and they helped administer COVID vaccines to the community. Police Department continued youth empowerment camps, and the police academy in Operation Ceasefire, which was converted to a drive-in event. Goal Two, and that goal is, um, is to be a responsive city government supporting a diverse and viable economy. And under this goal, the city partnered with FCEDC to encourage qualified investors to engage in long-term investments in the low-income communities as we work to execute our opportunity zone plans. So moving into Fiscal Year 22, the city will bring forward market analysis and a proposed framework for incentives and land banks. I'll show you this table here. There we go. The city beautified Merkison Road corridor with strategic land purchase and the demolition of blight, planted trees, and moved forward significant projects like the Senior East Center, uh, the Senior Center East and the Tennis Center. Some KPIs. These are interesting. Council chose strategic KPIs for this goal that really shows community impact. We are on the right track. We had a 6% increase in satisfaction with the overall appearance of our major corridors, an 8% increase with satisfaction with the overall strength of Fayetteville's economy. The tax base, the residential, commercial, industrial, increased 32.5% over the last year. The vacancy rate for office, industrial, and retail decreased by nearly 10% from Fiscal Year 19. This is all pretty significant and heading in the right direction. Seven jobs were created through the use of ECD programs. That's down from two last year, but considering the impact of COVID over the last year and what we've seen with other companies, we think that's a positive outcome. We had a really big year in ECD programming to respond to COVID and to support and keep Fayetteville economy growing. We distributed more than $553,000 to small business, 1.25 million to residents needing help with rent, utility, or mortgage assistance, and we lost, and we launched the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Investment in today and tomorrow. This goal really focuses on building a great city. We're developing a funding plan for public safety and public service infrastructure, which is now, which now will incorporate ARPA. The city hall is under renovation to improve customer experience on the first floor. The pavement preservation pro, program was started with an excellent presentation last week, and the watershed master plan is a high priority and close to completion. Skip forward just a bit. Show you some data. We've handled more than 12,000 code enforcement violations, and as you can see from the graph, most of them are stemming from solid waste vehicles, substandard buildings, zoning violations, or sign violations. Some more KPI under Goal Three. We are a, a city that is absolutely growing, and our building trade inspections rose more than 34% since Fiscal Year 18, and that is maintaining 100% of them completed in the established deadline of the two business days. We have more than $201 million in value and permitting in Fiscal Year 21. That's up nearly 14% from Fiscal Year 2020. We had nearly 900,000 in completed stormwater projects. Now, your graph is gonna show that it's primarily, that it's down, but primarily this is because of the FEMA projects that we had completed in previous years. Skipping ahead a little bit, I wanted to highlight this chart, cuz it's really great. Um, so this is a good tool. We, um, we totaled the construction of some of the city's major ongoing projects and found that we had more than $101 million in substantial construction of public projects planned and underway. The page shows the pro, this, this page shows the project, progress of 10 of the current bond park projects. You all have seen this, this, um, one before from, um, the Construction Management Department. This one, I'm not sure if you have seen this one yet, but this page shows the pro, progress of other current city projects, like the Fire Station Number Four, City Hall renovation, parking lots, Day Resource Center, Veterans Park Two, the Ballpark Fountain, and Lake Rim Splash Pad. Again, all totaling $101 million. Skipping ahead a bit to Goal Four. Council's goal, Goal Four, is a desirable place to live, work, and recreate, and it's what we like to call the Quality of Life Goal. From the report, you'll note that the citizen satisfaction with overall quality of life in neighborhoods increased 6% since 2018. There's so much going on in this goal. It was really hard for me to pick which one to focus on and give a shot. This goal follows closely the development of three significant plans: the Park and Rec Master Plan, the ADA Transition Plan, which helps people with different abilities access city facilities and parks, and a 10-year strategic plan for affordable housing. So council provided direction for and adopted all three of these foundational plans during Fiscal Year 2021, and the plans are moving forward in 2022 into completion. Let's skip ahead and highlight this area. In Fiscal Year 21, council focused on beautification of the city. Council provided resources to implement a new rapid team to reduce litter and illegal dumping, and in their six months, they have cleared, the staff of this new program cleared 393 sites of illegal dumping with identification of violation and fine issued. Staff is working to install those security cameras and other, in the other problem locations. We held a citywide beautification event in April with over 250 participants, and we've collected more than two tons of waste from that event. And now, we will have another one planned for September 18th, this weekend's, right? Eight, I think you said 8:00 AM, Sacred Stadium. Be there or be square. That's what I heard. National Cleanup Day. Yes, ma'am. Skipping ahead. We're gonna focus here on, um, the homeless. The council prioritized residential revitalization and homeless efforts with three important strategies. We launched the Choice Neighborhood Grant. We purchased property for a new homeless day center, and we are collaborating with community partners on the Community Schools Program, Reentry Council, and all the good things that Pathways for Prosperity, um, is doing, P for P. Skipping ahead a bit. The airport terminal is being renovated for better customer service, and we just celebrated the kickoff, um, for our new Dallas-Fort Worth flight. Transit drivers will be riding on a new, on new battery-operated electric buses that were funded by the grant, and we donated a bus to FTCC to help their training program for transit drivers in an effort to fill, um, some driver vacancies. Council's Goal Five is to ensure a financially sound city that provides exemplary services. Some of the city's key performance indicators in this goal area show the impact of the pandemic and other social concerns, um, in our workforce. So let's, let's take a look. That's me down at the bottom corner there. All right. Uh, the city's retention rate fell from a high of 88% for two years to 85%. So that's really a 3% drop, but certainly an area of concern as we fill their vacancies. And we are not unlike our peer cities, who at this time are also lamenting over some staff shortages. Our DART score, or the Days Away From Work, increased dramatically, and that is, again, due to the COVID pandemic. Okay, we're at 9.08. The mean response in our employee survey holds around 3.36 on a scale of seven for employees that feel they are paid fairly for the work that they do. The industry best practice for this is 4.75 on a seven-point scale, and that is our target we wish to reach. The mean response for job satisfaction is fairly steady at 4.55. Recognizing that employees are the city's best asset, the council and senior staff have responded with the employer of choice strategies, bringing recommendations forward and implementing the comprehensive pay plan. Also, the city manager's office, as a safety, as safety precautions do allow, began an employee engagement strategy to improve leadership visibility with videos and Zoom chats, as well as visiting directly with employees to hear from them. More of this type of engagement is planned as COVID restrictions ease, and hopefully, hopefully soon. Skipping ahead to a Goal Six. The last city cold, but certainly it is not the least, and it focuses on ways to engage and collaborate with citizens and businesses. The city focused on maximizing relationships with Fort Bragg this year, or this past year. The city is participating in the military's Host City Coalition and hosted the Army's birthday event. We formalized the MacArthur Road Sports Complex MOU and engaged with the North Carolina Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, and we're partnering with Fort Bragg on the placement of the digital information kiosks. The city's conducting a disparity study to improve city policy and practice relating to contracting with minority women-owned and disadvantaged businesses, which is targeted to be back to council sometime near December. In Fiscal Year 21, we had a 22%, uh, we had 22% of city contracts that were awarded to LSDBEs, and the city goal is 40%. Skipping ahead to look at this last KPI for Goal Six. The city worked with the consultants to develop a communication strategy to improve engagement with citizens and are gonna move forward with that strategy implementation. This Target for Action will be moving forward in Fiscal Year 22, and it also includes Fayette City improvements in developing a citywide customer service platform. So we can see here that the city's Facebook followers, public records requests, and Boarding Commission members have all increased over the last few years. We've included the call center and Fayette City data in this report to share with you in the year end, as several council members have requested, requested that information. So let's take a look real quick. We have four call takers and a supervisor in the call center. They took in more than 65,000 calls. Most of them are bulky item, limbs, or solid waste-related. Here's a slide that shows, um, we have more than 16,000 Fayette City service requests. The top 10, again, are related to bulky item, limbs, or solid waste, with the addition here of code violations. So just with those two inputs, the city received more than 81,000 service requests last year. Okay, final slide. Um, also included in your report is an annual scorecard, big spreadsheet, with the results of the strategic, um, key performance indicators under each goal objective. And data in and of itself is useless, and then isn't really until you provide that context, the trending, and the comparisons, that it really becomes useful information. And from that information, you gain knowledge to better lead a city. This report provides not just the data, but the context around the data, so it becomes useful as you make those policy decisions. Moving forward into Fiscal Year 22, council, staff continues with our performance stat meetings on a monthly basis. We're developing- We're developing departmental business plans. And we will bring you a quarterly update on your TFA action plans at the close of each quarter. So the next update you will get from our staff, and it will be your spa team, your new spa team, will be in October. This completes my presentation this evening, council. Tonight, we are asking that you accept the fiscal year 21 annual performance report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Do have a couple of questions. I'll go to council member here and then write. Thank you, mayor. Ms. Rebecca, a good presentation as usual. Thank you for not going through all of your slides. A couple of things. The rental assistant program. I hear a lot about this program. I hear about it really all over the state and the difficulty sometimes people have in getting connected. How, how are we doing with the assistance with citizens that are calling in? Is it moving smoothly? And what is the amount of our budget that is left in that program? What, what do we start out with and where are we now?
Okay, so thank you for that question. We were here in this room not too long ago. Mr. Chris Colley gave a little brief update on the eRap. I believe that's what you're asking about. Just from personal experience, I've helped one person actually through that system. So personally, I have been in that system and helping someone through that. And I found it to be useful. I, I think, I think this person that I helped was, I think we're about two weeks in, three weeks in for feedback. And I believe that that's probably what you, what you'll see. As for the amount that we've totally, that we've gotten fresh in. Dr. Whitfield, do you have an updated amount?
Sure. As of last Friday, we have either covered or out of work about 1.5 million dollars for the city and the county together. We've supported about 310 families to stabilize them in their time of need. We're continuing to work with the vendors to do process improvement, to work on intake and communication in particular, as well as expediting those payments through. The challenge is making sure that we get a completed application, both from the applicant as well as from the landlord as well.
So you're, you're thinking then that the program is being pretty helpful? I mean, I see the amount we've, we've put in, so that sounds great. But as far as the process, that's okay?
Yeah, I didn't find it cumbersome at all, at all. But as Dr. Whitfield said, it, it requires both the applicant and the landlord to get into the system. And then, and then it kind of links them up. That'll happen very well. So as Dr. Whitfield was saying, I, I think there'll be some process improvement moving forward. But there's a lot of people looking for help. And I think, I, I do believe that it's a valuable assistance to the community.
Well, it is, yes. And I, I've heard that it is, but I've all, well. Okay, now, my last question is on our security cameras program. Especially with the legal dumping, that was one of our number one concepts for even bringing forth this type of a program. I want to know how it's working. I don't probably need to know so much where the cameras are. But one of my concerns is can they be, which was one of my initial conversation, questions, can they be relocated in various places? Because if, if they're in one place and they're doing a good job, and we can slow it down and people say, hey, something's going on here. We see the cameras. I, I hopefully the signs are there that's posted to kind of help spear people away. Then can we move them to other locations? Because we still have, we have a lot of issues with illegal dumping in the city.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
They are really working very hard under Dr. Newton in, in code enforcement division, the, the rapid team, and also with Mr. Brooke Redding's assistance. They will be purchasing the cameras and piloting them. And I believe they are going to be able to be relocated as, as needed.
Now, and, and my, my last question, ma'am, on this, because this is such a big deal. This is such a big problem. So when you're saying they're working well, I would like a little bit more defining of that. That means people are being caught, people are being prosecuted, or they're paying fines. I don't, I mean, whatever the case may be. Because it's a, it's a real big issue all over the city of large amounts of garbage. I don't mean just paper bags. I mean beds and old furniture, you know, the, the heavy duty stuff in different locations. How does that work as far as catching someone? Well, yeah, you got me.
So, so they are working hand in hand, not just with code enforcement, but also with solid waste and with city manager's office and with the call center. We're all kind of integrated now and in communication, which makes, which makes us a force to be reckoned with. So the rapid team, in their first six months of employment here, brand-new program, cleared 393 sites of illegal dumping. So those are sites. With identification of the violation that has occurred and the fines were issued when appropriate.
So people were caught?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Councilman Wright.
Yes, Ms. Jackson, thank you for that presentation. Very thorough and very quick. Thank you. I have some concerns that I just wanted, maybe you can clear, clear them up for me. Goal number two is diverse viable economy. And in the presentation, when you had the status priorities on the front, I guess it's page 17, just run down that real quick. Opportunity zones behind business growth plans from Merkison Road, Bragg Boulevard, beautification of gateways behind. And the built smart city capacity behind schedule. Residential revitalization efforts behind schedule. Addressing poverty and homelessness behind schedule. And also strategic strategies to educate and to engage the citizens. Then you went through, through those things. Can you help me to understand? Because those priorities are medium priorities and low priorities. I see you hit a lot of the high priorities that you completed.
Right.
So my question would be, once high priorities are complete, does those medium and low priorities take a higher priority or do they remain the same? And based on your presentation, I read through there on page 25, when we talk about execute opportunities on plans. Right now, there's no current budget for that. And we need a, a market analyst that budget estimates of $50,000. You know, $50,000 to sum is a lot, but based upon our goals and the priorities of what we're looking for, I think these opportunities need to be higher in our priority hit list. Because when you're talking about a diversity and viable economy, I think that's very, very important. So can you help me to understand where we are with those schedules that are behind?
Yes, sir, I can. It actually looks worse than it really is, and let me tell you why. On page, let's, let's give it a good example. So execute opportunity zone plan, page 25. Let's everybody flip to page 25. That's the header sheet. So this tells you the project description, the budget, the leadership sponsors, community outcomes. Flip it one more time, okay, to page 26. Now this, and every single target for action. So every single one of these targets for action has a full action plan for fiscal year 21 and fiscal year 22. The staff here tonight, they worked with every single city department, the managers, the staff that moved these projects forward, the ACMs, I'm sorry, the assistant city managers. And they had quarterly meetings for these targets for action, for these projects, that, that helped us identify any barriers for completion and help us move those and address those action plans. So I guess what I'm trying to tell you is it, it, as long as you see that plan here on page 26, this is moving forward. And if, if staff has a barrier that, that they, that they find, they come back at that quarterly meeting. So the reason why execute opportunity zone plan was in yellow was because you can see that we had, we completed the one action step, the city council briefing with the FCEDC. That was done. But the investor day was postponed due to, due to the pandemic. And that just really didn't get brought forward again. It is though planned for fiscal year 22. So if you see that line right there in the center, you've got the action plan for fiscal year 21 at the top. And you have the action plan for fiscal year 22 at the bottom. So you can literally just roll from one year to the next and really see where those specific action plans are coming from and where we might be slightly behind. So that is one example of being slightly behind. And it really, it, that one in particular had a lot to do with the, with the COVID pandemic. But I can tell you that all of those, the action plan there has been, you know, we, we've, we've covered that in the TFA quarterly meetings, and they're fully prepared to move that forward next fiscal year.
Okay, great. That TFA 4.6.1 is dealing with addressing poverty and homelessness. We have that as a priority of low, a low priority, which is behind schedule. And I just don't believe that that's a low priority for us at this point, based upon, you know, the vision of this councilor and what's going on and how we're working toward poverty in, in our region right now. You know, we're tier one, we're trying to build that up. And so tell me, tell me a little bit about, about.
So let me, let me start with the priority and address that first. If you'll recall back in the strategic planning retreat, Dr. Manzo, when Dr. Manzo was with you, she had the city council and the mayor rank all of these targets for action. And that's where that comes from. And so we left that priority in here in case anyone really wanted to see that. But in terms of an action plan, what I want you to do is, is turn on your book to page 62. And that's going to, I think, provide some, some more detail as to, to where that slightly behind schedule came from. And that, that's really dealing with, initially, the FY21 action plan was really supporting the P for P strategy. So the community and schools, I believe that there were some, some issues. Again, I don't, I believe that it had to do with the pandemic and really using that funding appropriately through the schools. Is that correct, Dr. Whitfield? He's nodding. And then the supporting the P for P strategies, the reentry council was done, and the homeless day center planning was done. And then you'll see, coming into fiscal year 22, we still have the P for P strategies for community and schools, as well as investigating that empowerment plan model for the applicability to the city available, if you'll remember, and then also the homeless day center construction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilman Davis.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ingram.
Yes, if there are no other questions, I'd like to make a motion to set the fiscal year 2021 year-end strategic performance report.
Okay, I'll circle right back to you. I do see second round. Councilman here, was that a question or you?
Yes, sir. Question, please.
Forgive me, ma'am, I missed it. I didn't write it on my list. I had it in my book. As we look at fiscal year 21, TFA item 2.41. And I meant to ask this earlier, Rebecca. Where are we, if that can be answered with you all? Because it may, it may not be. But where are we with our gateway beautifications? We start at one, Ramsey Street. And I see that, of course, it's behind. I, I see it stated in the book that it's behind. But could you tell us what it, what are the, the reasoning, the reasoning behind it? I know we had some, I know it's a part of our art issue. Then I know we have the DOT part that they were doing. The, I think, the 1.5 mil that they had put in. We never even got to that point. Can you kind of bring me, bring us up to speed where we are with that? If you can.
So on page, on page 29 is the full action plan. And that is where we can find the, all the action plans related to the Merkison Road, Bragg Boulevard, beautification of city gateways. We've got the V Point Grocery, the NCVP design, the Tennis Center design, the Senior Center East design, the city, Center City Trail Master Planning, the beautification. So that's where we, and we're planting the trees, utilizing the tree funding, and then improving the lighting on Rowan Street. And then, of course, you've got next year, or actually, it's this fiscal year's action plan, our fiscal year 22. So I believe your question, sir, and thank you for that, was regarding the murals.
Well, the, the murals are a part of it. Also, the landscaping from the funding that we, that we receive from DOT. And we had that presentation when we were doing the gateway committees. And when I see it in the book that it's behind, which it is, I was just trying to see exactly why we were kind of where we are.
Dr. Whitfield, are you able to answer that question or should we?
Sure.
If you can tonight, if not.
One of the things I just want to reiterate is when you look at the TFAs, also understand that they really do encompass a lot of different things. So choice is also in that. So that being the choice neighborhood footprint. So the work that we're doing around choice is also included in that. Merkison Road redevelopment as well. As far as the NCDOT pieces, some of that was a delay because of NCDOT. But we're, we're continuing to move forward as Ms. Jackson referenced, the work on the lower Merkison Road that you all, ARS and Rick do.
Right, right, right.
The tree fund has moved forward. V Point Grocery.
Right.
As well as Tate Funeral Home, you know, acquiring that property, moving forward with that, as well as the work that we're doing.
Yeah, thanks, Doc. I'm pretty, I'm pretty good up on those. And, and they're looking very good.
Yes, sir.
I was mainly speaking more at the I-295 as they come into those, those two, three major roads.
We'll definitely get that back to you.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, sir. Thank you, Rebecca.
You're welcome, sir. That's a follow-up.
All right, so council, just before I go to, go to council member Ingram. Ms. Jackson, I just wanted to make sure I heard correctly. And I'm sure I heard it correctly, but the listening audience, I want to make sure they heard it correctly. So in spite of some of the rumor mills that are going around, according to statistics, crime, overall crime is down 17% compared to. Okay, so I'm, make sure I'm reading that right. And traffic collisions are down. We, we had a real issue with traffic collisions a few years ago on roads like Clifdale and others. So we put some emphasis on enforcement over there. Community watch groups are actually up 15%, if I see that correct. Tax value of property is up 32.5%. So you, if you had a house a few years ago, it's now worth 32.5% more and, or a piece of property, commercial property, residential, or industrial, if I'm reading that right.
It's the tax base.
Tax base. So that means we've added more to the base, not just the individual, so.
Correct.
Organic, 32%, that's big.
Right, right, two different things.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, that's huge. And vacancy rates, empty buildings.
Empty buildings.
We had more empty commercial property than Philadelphia a few years ago, but now we're down almost 10%. So, so, I, no, that's what the consultant said. Yeah, he said, you've got the level of vacant commercial properties that Philadelphia has. Yeah, and they're five times our size. So I'm just making sure I'm reading the numbers right. Because, you know, people can say things, but numbers usually say what they say, right?
Numbers say what they say, sir.
Okay, all right. So I'm not a data analyst or anything. I just, you know, part-time attorney that didn't renew his license and so.
You never know, sir. You might be calling yourself a data analyst next time.
All right, all right. So, yeah. Oh, Mr. Hewitt.
Yeah, before I go, I don't know if Councilman Kinston had a question too, but I wanted to respond to a question that Councilmember here made. He's back now. Ms. Hared asked about citations for illegal dumping. And in the last nine months, we have issued 18 illegal dumping citations. And we have picked up over 200 tons of waste from those sites. So the program is paying off.
Councilmember Kinston, you had something?
Yes, sir, I have my hand up.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. That's okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things, I just want to make a comment under the Build a Smart City capacity. I know you had it listed as behind, but one of the things that I do want to highlight, which I think is a major accomplishment, is the, the signature technology for the speed humps. I, I didn't see it listed, but I do want to make sure that we do acknowledge that that is now available with the IT department, because there was a concern with being able to go out and do the, you know, get the signatures for the speed hump. And now that that signature technology is there for residents to be able to use, I do want to highlight that, even though it does show behind, because that is a major accomplishment for the city of Fayetteville. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And, and I, I believe we could actually include that in fiscal year twenty-two year-end report, because of the way that that shifted in the, in the summer timeframe, we can actually include that in the fiscal year annual twenty-two annual report. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that the city council accepts the fiscal year twenty-one year-end strategic performance report.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Ingram, the second is by Councilmember Kinston, to accept the report. And any discussion on a motion, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Ingram?
Green.
Councilmember Wardell?
Green.
All right. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. Motion carries. Good job. Ms. Rebecca?
And Chris-
Jackson and Team?
And Team, that's right. And Angela, thank you, sir.
All right. Uh, Council, before we go to public forum, well, we are, I guess we can, can make it through this, so, public forum, and then we'll take a, a brief minute break before we come back to the other remaining items. Public forum, this is a time that any Fayetteville resident may have input and a voice in what goes on in their city. Due to policy restrictions, a forum without lasting longer than thirty minutes, and each speaker will be limited to only three minutes to address the city council on issues related to the city. Individuals wishing to speak at tonight's public forum should have signed up with the city clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. If you are here to speak on items that may be on tonight's agenda under the public hearing, I ask that you please reserve those comments to the public hearing. So when your name is called, or you're acknowledged by the city clerk, I ask that you would come to the podium or via phone, clearly state your name and address for the record. Then when thirty seconds remains, you'll be notified. And when time has expired, your time is up. Again, due to policy restrictions, we're unable to extend the given time. That, Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Yes, ma'am, we have nine speakers this evening.
Our first speaker is Mr. Tony Farley.
Uh, Mr. Farley, are you there? Mr. Farley, can you hear us?
He's not present.
Okay.
Okay, our next speaker is Ms. Joanne Adams.
Uh, Ms. Adams, can you hear us? Ms. Adams?
Not present.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Mr. Cornelius Glover.
Uh, Mr. Glover, can you hear us?
Star six.
Uh, can you press star six, Mr. Glover, so that you can unmute?
How y'all doing? My name's Cornelius Glover. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can hear you. Please state your ad, your name and address, Cornelius Glover.
My address is four oh four Gruber Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina. And what my concern is, I am a truck driver. And I have realized that there are not so many, there's not so many options to, to when it comes towards parking around Fayetteville. And I was wondering, what are y'all doing about, you know, as far as developing, uh, truck stops and what are y'all doing for, uh, because we are the bloodline to this country. We keep, we help keep the country going. You got a lot of people inside the city that drive trucks, and you got a lot of people that go, that are, go through the city with trucks. And it's becoming a big issue that when, when we don't have parking or options, or whatever options we have are not so many. That's all I have to say. I mean-
No, well, well, Mr. Glover, we typically don't respond directly to you while you're doing your time, but once you complete, we'll make sure if there's any information that kind of addresses your question, the manager does have, have something, because I remember us, we've talked about this issue a couple of times. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. At a recent council meeting, you approved a special use permit for such a facility off of Cedar Creek Road. I think that was in the last month. And the caller is correct that as, and you also heard about that as well from some items in your closed session. So there is a need identified for additional truck parking, but the council also in years past has also received a lot of complaints about parking in neighborhoods. And so if that is something that council would like us to work on more actively, we definitely could program that to try to identify, turn suitable zoning districts that could occur.
Mr. Glover, did you hear that, sir?
Yes, sir. It sounds like good news to my ears. Uh, that's all I, I wanted to hear, but, um, I just, I just, my, my concern is just don't forget about us truck drivers.
Absolutely.
We are this, I, this is my fir, this is my first time in, in a, in a city council meeting, and I'm gonna start getting involved more because of things like this. I just want to make sure that, that we are thought of as well.
Absolutely, sir. Well, Mr. Glover, thank-
Thank y'all, Doc. I'm still here.
Okay, I was saying, were you, were you, were you finished?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for the work that you do. So we, council will follow that up with the manager. Not sure if that was, that was a private request, I think, private landowner with the, with the trucking business. I think we just approved the, the zoning for it, but we'll certainly follow up to get that information out to the public. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Yes, ma'am. Our next speaker is Ms. Kathy Greggs.
Ms. Greggs, are you there?
Yes, I am. Hello, everyone. Good evening. So I am calling today because Fayetteville PAC and Statewide Partners went on a canvassing, and we still are canvassing neighborhoods here locally when it comes to the EWRAP program. I believe last week, the system was down several times. Also, the phone number for the one eight-hundred number went to voicemail. We have several people that have been getting evicted in a certain area, which is District Three, thirty-five people a week. And everyone here is talking about pandemic and how they're trying to help the people, but I haven't seen any of our council members out in the districts having conversations to find out how the eviction process is going. Today, we also went online, and it says that some of the funds are actually going away pretty quickly. I don't know if the funds has been going away, because the people that I have been talking to has actually been having issues. We have several people that had applied two months ago and still waiting for their money, okay? Tomorrow, we'll be at the courthouse, because there's several people getting evicted tomorrow from District Three, and no one has came down to assist the people. So though we're sitting in these nice little quiet desk area and getting experts to come up here and tell us how it is, let's really make sure we're checking and balancing, because right now, that's not happening, if you have thirty-five people getting evicted every week from the same District Three area. So I really think we need to get to work and find out what's going on, so we won't remain a tier one. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Robert Walls.
Mr. Walls, can you hear us?
He's not there. Our, our next speaker is Mr. Kalaj Mitchell.
Mr. Mitchell, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, how you doing? My name is Kalaja Mitchell. I am here, I think you said my address, right? Here locally in Fayetteville, and I just wanted to definitely get, address the problems of the deaf community here in Fayetteville. I host deaf meetup events, so we can all come out and network with each other. And at my previous event that happened about two weeks ago, many of the deaf community here in Fayetteville was talking about the problems that they are facing in access to interpreters, they don't have enough jobs, it's hard for them to get jobs, education is very low for the deaf community, and it's a really huge issue, because if you know it or not, the deaf community in Fayetteville, it's, it's very big. It's a lot, it's a lot of them, and they are very underrepresented, underrepresented, and we need that addressed as soon as possible.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, our next speaker is Ms. Patricia Nibbins.
Uh, Ms. Nibbins, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Patricia Mebbin, and I'm at Hope Loop Commons. I called last month on issues with United Management, too. The only thing that I can tell you as far as what have I seen far as progress was, they sent us out letters, and then I am noticing that there are more trash pickups for our dumpsters. But otherwise, things are still the same, work orders, uh, no one that we can talk to and communicate with, and I know they say COVID, 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 but things were going on before COVID started. I had an electrical problem. It takes, they tell you thirty days, but when you have an electrical problem, it's, you need to get it checked right away. And the last thing that I had done was, on Sunday night, I had a fire de, a smoke detector to go off. I'm sixty-seven, I'm five feet. I didn't have any way of doing it, so I called United Management. They're not on location, uh, on the weekend and just certain days of the week, but when you call the main office, there's no one to ever answer. I called the fire department, because my son is a firefighter in Cary, North Carolina, and I hate to bother them over trivial things like this, but they came out. I put in a work order the next morning, and I got a call from a site manager. I didn't know, because they, they just, they go and come here. But anyway, I wanted to tell you that what can we do? I know you can't tell me anything tonight, but you have my address and my number. Ms. Jennifer, the city clerk, she has been really good as far as informing me how to go about these things, and I really do appreciate her, and I want you all to know that she is really good at her job. But the fire department did come out, but I asked, the site manager did call, and she told us, I asked her, was, you know, I read my lease, and I'm going through it thoroughly now, more so than ever. But she, she told me, you need to do things yourself as much as possible, and that just can't happen, because when the fire department came out, I had a neighbor downstairs, she is a senior and she is handicapped, hers had been going off for about three weeks, and they went down and changed that. So we need somebody other than these site managers, because it's not enough to go around to come, we need someone that we can talk with to tell us all about these things. I still have a crack in my cement on the second floor, and it has never been addressed. So I am very concerned with just the communication that we don't get from United Management, too. And it is a big company, but they need to follow up. They get us in here, and then it's nothing done. Thirty days, thirty days, that's all we hear, but some things need to be done within that thirty days. And I do appreciate you all listening to me. Thank you for the opportunity, but my address, I've given it, and my phone number with human relations, I really would like a number or someone to call other than these site managers, because we have a handyman, and he can't tell me about any type of electrical work or any cracks in our cement. So thank you very much, and you all have a blessed evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, our next speaker is Mr. Joseph Wheeler.
Uh, Mr. Wheeler, are you there?
Yes, hello?
Hey, sir.
Hello, um, my name is Joseph Wheeler. I'm in District Three. I reside at Lake in the Blind Department Community, and I am facing eviction. The reason that I am calling, or at this meeting this evening, is to discuss the EWRAP program and the issues with the EWRAP program specifically. I don't feel that the people who apply are actually getting the attention that they need to get. Personally, I applied over three months ago. I was number five thousand in their pipeline. I have reached out to my worker, where she told me only to reach out via text, and I've got no text response back except for one time, and then I was told that it's a long process and you just have to wait. Secondly, I've tried to call the number, and I've gone to the website where they have the application that you can access to see where your status is and what's going on. That website stays down. Additionally, I actually go to court tomorrow for an appeal case I'm having on my eviction. I've informed them of this fact over three months ago. I've kept them abreast of all of the information that they have requested. I have provided them with documentation they requested. They've communicated with my apartment community, which is a whole different story, but I'm not feeling like I'm getting any support from them, when I can't even reach a live person, they're only in the office for two days. So in my days, I'm not trying to go down there on their schedule. I mean, I'm trying to get what I can get done, done with this process, but it's a very frustrating process that EWRAP has going on. And when I can't reach out to a case manager, or I can't get any more information on my case, my eviction is still pending. And I could get evicted tomorrow, but I provided them with that information over three months ago. And being five thousand in the pipeline, and when I see information that the monies are being released, I'm wondering where they are in their pipeline, because it sounds like they're getting more money, and I'm just wondering where this money's going, because after three months, I was told the process would take two weeks. So it's a little frustrating.
Uh, Mr. Wheeler, absolutely. We, uh, we're very concerned as well that the program works properly. Receive a lot of calls from a lot of citizens. There were, there was a state version, and then there was the one that city and county contracted. So if we have your telephone number, we'll get someone to talk to you kind of offline to make sure that you're connected with the right, with the right place, because we know how pressing of an issue this is. And I think it's almost time for the council to bring our contractor in here that we've, that we've assigned this to, so that they can tell us what the problems are, because I'm tired of answering questions that we don't have control over the process. So I think that is a conversation that needs to happen, and, but if you hold on, we have your number, they will make sure that we can get your specifics on your situation and see if we can help, help move that along. But thank you, sir, and hang in there. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Before we move forward in this process, is it possible for us to have the city manager address who is actually over this program and what the process is supposed to look like and what it in fact looks like? Because while this dialogue is going on here locally, I'm reading about this happening across the nation with funds that are supposed to be helping to prevent eviction. And so I just want to make sure that those who are listening have a comprehensive understanding, because I think you nailed it on the head when you said that we really don't have any control over the delivery of these dollars. And so can we just very briefly have the manager touch on that, so that we can make sure that people understand where we fall in this process?
Thank you, absolutely.
I agree with that, ma'am.
Yep. Mr. Manager?
I'm hearing that all the time. We were before council recently and kind of echoed some of the same concerns that you're hearing tonight and that we've heard from you as well. Regrettably, this is not a smooth throughput process. Receive the money, and as we had reported at the city-county liaison, Mayor, as you'll recall, as well as we've done with council, not only at meetings, but also in inquiries to, in writing to questions that you've had and others. There is a great deal of frustration, and particularly for Mr. Wheeler, when he feels that he's submitted everything and he has asked questions and he can't get a response. That is something that we definitely can follow up with, with the contractor. But the larger element, if, with the program sadly, is that the federal government puts a lot of restrictions on the money to make sure that the money is spent, and that it helps those people who they feel needed it quickest. And so even though applications may have come in and been supported, we were under a mandate, I think, to take care of the eighty percent of, of income first, and not only, and so all of our case management, even if stuff was coming in, was focused- management, even if stuff was coming in, was focused on those people. And so that 1.5 million dollars that Dr. Whitfield mentioned is related to that. Um, the contractor has and will continue to do things such as adding additional staff. We had talked about, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Whitfield if he can confirm, by shaking his head, they're actually are putting people at the courthouse to try to ask the judges to sideline landlords and tenants, to try, if they're not in the process, to at least say, get in the process, and if they're in the process, to acknowledge that yes, this person has done everything they could so far as their application. But still, you have people like Mr. Wheeler who are facing imminent eviction, and we understand that. And so, at, at, Mayor, your guidance to him, I think, is the one that I would do, be hold on. We do have his contact information, and he will get a call um, uh, tomorrow from someone on staff to try to explain to him where we are. Um, but at the bottom of that, I think, as you've seen, for the council members who have sent us emails, um, it is a multi-touch process, where you have to submit information through the portal, they reach out to the landlord, and there's all, and it's a lot of back and forth, and it takes time to go through that many applications. If he was, he said five thousand? If you can imagine that, um, the city and the county, we don't have a rental management program like this. Um, we, as the mayor and others will recall, we had a smaller pot of money for the CARES Act, and we were able to work with a local partner, I think it was um, uh, Kingdom Global Impact Ministries, to help us process some of those. Um, but the order of magnitude that we have here, particularly when people are so far behind, and this money is so flexible, to allow you to pay on the rearage, but also pay in advance, but also pay utilities, too, um, it's, it's a perfect storm. Need, uh, government red tape, Mr. Hair, um, and a timeline, a deadline. But um, we'll be happy to talk to our, our partner agency and, and our contractor, and ask them to come and be available at an upcoming city council meeting, um, not only to explain to council, but also so that we can explain it on our channel to the public as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Manager.
Okay, thank you. Good, good comment, good question, Councilwoman Waddell. Um, all right, uh, Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Iman Mohammed Aronami Smith.
The minister himself. Is he on the line?
He is, ask the star six.
Uh, Honorable Mr. Aronami, can you press star six?
Greetings, everyone. God sees upon you. The mayor did not forget the honorable, the honorable. I'm calling y'all to give y'all the love, give you the greetings, and we are very, very proud of the hard work that you're doing. And uh, we really appreciate uh, the poor being honored and represented, that we can do more for the poor. We have a lot of good news, and of course, we have a couple of key things that we're not totally pleased with. But uh, the United States of America, those who were at Fort Bragg sixty, seventy years ago, many of them are so happy to come back to Fayetteville, North Carolina, and go to the baseball stadium, where we're having a baseball game every day this week, as Jennifer has told me, every day this week. And I want everyone on the city council to put out the word, that we have a baseball stadium, thirty million dollars already built. And we have a new bus station built beside that, that Shabbat doesn't have, Greensburg doesn't have, Winston-Salem doesn't have. And they're kind of upset, because we got a baseball stadium brand new. Uh, also, I want you to remember that yesterday at Seabook Park, there was a shooting about twen, uh, yes, you gotta notice, there was a shooting about twenty-five shots were fired. And I had gone out about an hour and a half earlier just to look over the children and make sure that it was safe, playing basketball. And so I actually heard the shots myself. And the police department, sheriff department, they know about it. But uh, bringing the young people and, and honor our youth. Every uh, city council meeting should be talking about how our young people are doing. And uh, uh, Seabook Park had a boxing tournament for the young people, and uh, quite frankly, much as I love the young people, I hope, I hope they will not have another boxing tournament. I don't want any of the children to get hurt. But keep up the great work, and Abs, uh, Hair is absolutely right, that the great work on the 295 Business Loop, we're so proud. And when people come from around the country and go on that 295 Business Loop turnpike, they are amazed, and the generals at Fort Bragg are amazed, that Fayetteville has made such progress. So keep up the great work, alrighty?
Thank you, sir.
Alrighty?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh.
Um, Jennifer, are we, is that our last speaker?
Yes, Ma'am, Ms. Joanne Adams, who was speaker number two, is trying to uh, get through again. We're not sure if we, she's dialing in on the number that she provided us with. Okay.
Ms. Adams, is she there?
Hello, hello?
Yes, Ms. Adams, welcome. Could you please state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Joanne Adams, and I reside at 210 Central Drive, Fayetteville. I'm requesting that a historical marker program be established in Fayetteville. Historical markers educate the public and show a diversity of the history and culture of communities. Markers have been described as history on a stick or plaque. Fayetteville has many state and local markers, but does not have a true diversity of local markers focusing on African-American places and events. Months ago, I, I contacted zoning about a permit for the establishment of a local school marker, and was told that there's, there would be research or city ordinances as such a request had never been made. I was told that a marker type like what appears in front of High Smith Hospital on Robinson Street would have to go through NCDOT. However, that is not a state marker. It appears that there is some misunderstanding about NCDOT markers and local markers. Therefore, I have provided you with information about marker programs. In the printouts I provided for review, you can see that my request for a historical marker program is in line with programs that have been established in various North Carolina communities. There are cities and counties that have established the historical marker programs in conjunction with each other. I provided you with examples of local markers commemorating schools and neighborhoods in North Carolina, such as Winston-Salem, Holly Springs, and High Point. A Fort Bragg school integration marker was included. As you can see, the appearance of that state marker is much different from local markers. Sometimes markers are paid for by private funds and sometimes by public funds. I have provided you with copies of my email contact with Ms. Angela Wagner of North Carolina Highway Marker Program. She is available for consultation regarding establishment of marker programs. As you may have noticed, I inquired about the Lafayette Historical Tool Marker. I learned that while it is a highway marker, it is not a North Carolina historical marker. I hope that you will consider a local historical marker program. Markers add to the diversity of local community history. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We have no further speakers, sir.
All right, so with that, we will conclude the public forum. Council will take uh, probably about a uh, let's see, what time is it? We'll return at uh, maybe quarter till nine, eight forty-five, and we'll finish up items, uh, last remaining items. So council will call our meeting back to order. Item 10.01, um, I know we have staff members here, uh, ready and willing, and Juan Valdez is somewhere around here, him and his team. Um, but, but uh, council, uh, the, the text amendments, I know we were uh, talked offline to, to a few uh, before and after the meeting. There were a number of things with languages. Language makes a world of difference in these, in these ordinances. Um, single changes, and so, um, I would, I would ask the council if we could consider a work session that actually allows us to do it. For instance, and I know she's about to give her presentation, not trying to ruin that, but uh, it went from uh, eighteen by nine square feet for a requirement to a hundred and eighty square feet. Uh, eighteen by nine feet to a hundred and eighty square feet. And that was the language change. And so, and those were planters in the end of rows on parking lots. So, you know, eighteen by nine feet is a hundred and sixty-two square feet. A hundred and eighty square feet is larger. So now the planters really, even though it seems smaller, was larger. So it's things like that, technical words, that, that make a big difference with, uh, a lot. There's an impact for, so, um, it was tough to try to follow it, and so I was just asking for consideration before we, you know, whether council chooses to, to go through the presentation or not. I was just asking if the council could consider bringing this to a work session, so that we actually can read in detail. Uh, Mayor Protiel?
Um, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I will support your um, recommendation. I, I will say that I read over them, and I have had to deal with a lot of it, and I'm still not understanding it. And, and I know if I'm having a hard time with it, trying to figure it out, and dealing with it, um, that we, I, I believe we do need a work session, um, to straighten it out myself, to understand it, for me to understand it better.
All right, so, so, um, council, any other comments, um, for, ask for some action to, to bring this to the next work session for a more of a thorough look?
Does the mayor make a motion that we're bringing item? 10.01, um, seven proposed text amendments, um, back to council doing a work session, so that we can work out the details.
All right, is the motion by Councilmember Davis, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Uh, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes, bring this to a work session. All right, may, uh, Councilmember Ingram?
Green.
Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you. So, thank you, council. We'll look look to take a little closer look at that. Item eleven point zero one. Committee recommendations, boards and commissions, Mayor Pro Tim. Oh, is it a staff member or you?
It's me.
Okay.
Did.
Mayor Pro Tim did. Oh, I'm sorry. So the vote was nine to one. Voting in opposed, Councilmember Kinston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We on eleven point oh one, the boards and commissions met, and we have recommendations for forty-nine appointments to seventeen of the Fayetteville, City of Fayetteville Boards and Commissions. I will would like to say that we do have, still have openings on some boards, and that we sent out a press release today for that. With that being said, I, yes, Councilmember Kinston. Okay, so before I turn it over to Councilmember Dawkins to read the nominations, can I go to Councilmember Kinston and then there's Ingram.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. As the the names are being read, I would like to make a motion that we do an up-down vote based on boards and commissions. Not individual names, but based on boards and commission. So please, council.
So that is a motion by Councilmember Kinston to, can you repeat your motion, please?
Yes, to do a up-down vote based on boards and commissions, not individual names, but by the board and commission.
Oh, okay, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that if nobody else has in the room.
I I think Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, I thought I saw her hand.
Okay.
All right. So it's a motion by Councilmember.
I have a question. So what I'm hearing is for every board, we're going to do an up-down vote?
You're saying the name of the board, not the name of the person. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. So there's a motion by Councilmember Kinston as stated to, as as the the recommendations are read by by the board versus the individual. Then seconded by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. And now Councilmember Kinston, is this just in the pronunciation of your motion, or what's the details of?
This is for each board of commission. Just for example, if you're doing the joint city and county commission, there's two names there. That once those two names are there, that we do an up-down vote for the names to be accepted.
So do that with each section?
For each section, for each board or commission.
Is that voting per person?
Exactly.
But per board? Yeah, all right. So so motion's been made by Councilmember Kinston, seconded by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So I'm just trying to understand this. So we're voting on the boards up and down. And say, a council member disagrees with an individual selection. And so they voted down, but there's no conversation on why. I'm not understanding how that can be effective. If I'm understanding properly as to what your motion is and what what to what degree do you want to do that?
Councilmember Wright, the way that I have made the motion, if we do the boards and commission not by individual names, but we do it by boards, it's going to have an up or down vote. When the up or down vote is done, there is a discussion portion if there's any concern, and that allows us to be able to have that discussion. If it's approved by the up or down vote, then that vote stands. So if you have joint city and county appearance commission, you're going to get a up or down vote on the names that are listed.
Based on the recommendation?
Based on the recommendation from.
From the committee committee.
Gotcha.
Okay. All right, we, Councilmember Ingram?
No, thank you. I'm good, sir.
Okay. All right, council, we clear? All right. So, all right, it's it's been motion by Councilmember Kinston, seconded by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Discussion is taking place. All those in favor, show of hands to be read as stated. All right, those voting in favor, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, Councilmember Kinston, Councilmember Ingram.
Green.
Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
All right, those voting opposed, Councilmember, please hand. Councilmembers Davis, Dawkins, Wright, Colvin Hare. So motion five to five.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to isolate, isolate the votes to move forward.
Please, please explain. Councilmember Ingram, can you clarify what you mean by isolate them?
Yeah, so so isolating the vote and and I'm going to have, because I think it's the same thing as what Councilmember Kinston was was trying to offer. But I was going to propose it a different way, but I think.
I just have a question. What's the way we normally do it? That's what I think has a couple of us confused. So the way we normally do it is the the, Mr. Dawkins is usually the the appointed reader. It's just that reads the names according to the recommendation. So what was what was being proposed? How was that different?
Mayor, the motion is being different by before it was pulled where we did an up-down vote on every single.
Oh, I understood that. So so I understood you were saying not to vote that way, but you didn't want it to read the people who were listed?
No, I do want all the things, I wanted all the names read, and then based after all the names are read, do an up-down vote for that board or commission. So just as I explained, if you have the joint commission, you would read both names. We would do an up or down vote on that commission, that these people are placed on that commission. But since that vote failed, Mayor, I would like to ask, after the names are read, I would like to pull PWCs for an up or down vote.
Okay, that's a motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Kinston to, is that is that to approve, or is that just to separate? Is that to approve all except that or separate?
For an up or down vote.
On that one?
On that particular one.
Okay. So there's a motion by Councilmember Kinston to, as stated, it's getting late, something about to get tongue tied. There's a second by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin. Councilmember Ingram, you had a question? Oh, okay. So seconded by Council. Don't y'all start fighting about these seconds. I I'm seeing one and hearing one. All right.
I'm good on the second. That's the best Councilmember Banks McLaughlin.
All right. So there's a a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? This is to, this is for a separate vote for the public works.
Yeah, yeah, you have discussion. It's only one name. I understand.
So what would be the separate, so then what would be the rest of?
Please.
There is one name as a recommendation, as we've said before, as a recommendation.
All right. These minutes are going to be very confusing. So for the record, this is you, this is the Kinston McLaughlin motion. Please explain what it is exactly.
Mayor, what I would like to do is have an up-down vote for PWC to be isolated as a separate vote for discussion. Let's put it that way.
Okay. All right.
When we get to PWC, I want that one pulled so that we can have a discussion.
So we're clear, sir? All right, those in favor of the motion, Councilmember Kinston to separate as stated, show of hands, those in favor? All right, Councilmembers Ingram?
Green.
Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
All right, those voting opposed? All right, Madam Kirk, that motion is five to five, motion fails. All right, Madam, Mayor Pro Tim, before we get another motion on the floor, can you allow, I mean, can you have the designated reader read, I guess? Whatever the normal process is.
So with that being said, Councilmember Dawkins will be more than happy to read all the boards and commissions and do it very eloquently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. The the one thing I've learned is the most important thing somebody likes to hear in their life is their name. So if I mispronounce your name, I'm I'm sorry. There are, there are three or four, I've already, I've been practicing for the Joint City and County Apairance Commission, Clyde Foster and Willie Dorman. For the Board of Appeals, Aaron Callaway and Willie Dorman. For the Board of Advisors, for the Woodpeckers Capital Reserve Account, George Breeze, Jordan Jones, Dr. Dennis Corbin, Colonel Retired Peter Aubrey. For the Fayetteville Cumberland Economic Development Board, we're going to have to advertise for that additional position. The Ethics Commission, the recommendation is Thomas Donnelly. For the Fayetteville Advisory Committee on Transit or Fact, we're going to have to advertise for those three positions. For the Leonard Park, the recommendation is Dr. Jimmy Riggins. For the Human Relations Commission, Franco Webb, Simone Pemberton and Simone Pemberton and Eileen Hatch. For the Millennial Advisory Commission, Caleb Fernandez, Chester Hampton, Catherine Kelly, Aleah Lane, Travani McNeil, Ayesha West. For the Fayetteville Cumberland Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Cindy McCormick is the recommended person. For the Planning Commission, Laurie Linder, Raymond McCarr, Aaron Callaway as the alternate, Murray Odom Duggins Jr. as the alternate. For the Public Arts Commission, Ella Ren. For the Fayetteville Public Works Commission, Colonel Retired Donald Porter. For the Fayetteville Redevelopment Commission, Quan Tika Conley Jackson. For the Joint Fayetteville Cumberland County Senior Citizens Advisory Commission, Carrie Berg, Morris Bowden, Dana Kolb Fleisch, Gertrude Thompson, Jeffrey Ren, Patricia Archie Jackson, Karika Chavis. For the Stormwater Advisory Board, Rodrick Gooden, Benjamin Stout, Joseph Halascheck. And then the fourth position, we'll have to advertise. zoning commission, Roger Shaw, Pavin Patel, and Stephen McCorkedale. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the list.
Thank you, Councilmember Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I guess what we need to do is have a vote. What what I'm going to say through this process is we have done a lot of names here. And by the vote not passing to pull one, if this does not, this slate does not pass, we have to go back to the drawing board for everybody. I think what was wanting to be done was I would think that Councilmember Kinston wanted to put a nomination out on the floor. And I think that maybe the process wasn't done the way that it was supposed to. I don't know, but I am looking for a motion to accept the slate.
Councilmember Kinston. Was that a motion? Let me let me clarify this. So it's not a motion, okay. All right, Councilmember?
So is this a discussion portion?
No, it's not a motion yet.
We need a motion to accept the slate.
To accept the nominations, or the recommendations? Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
All right. Is that a motion?
That's not my motion. I said I'm looking for a motion to.
All right.
I thought what Mr. Mr. Dawkins did was to present the.
Make the motion, so you're looking for a second.
To accept the recommendations as read.
That's my motion.
All right. So then then I was, I stand corrected, there was a motion as Councilman Dawkins so eloquently read the names to accept the recommendation of the board as presented, as read. Was there a second to Dawkins' motion?
To accept these as read?
Yeah, the 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 Appointment Commission's Committee's recommendation. It's seconded by Councilmember Davis. Any discussion on the motion or questions? Discussion? Questions?
Did you question Councilmember Kinston?
I have a discussion on the PWC name that was presented. So Mayor, during our committee meeting, there was a concern that I brought regarding one of the questions for the listening audience. And the question was regarding what is your philosophy on city-owned water and sewer utility? And how will you, will your preparation ensure effective communication between the two organizations? On the nomination that was submitted, the application's answer was city-owned water and sewer are not good for the citizens, but for business recruitment as well. My twenty years of economic development experience and solid people skills. I have a concern with that that I did bring to the the committee, because with that question going into that position, there is already a biased statement that was made on the application. So with that information, I'm going to publicly say I have some concerns with the application name that was submitted.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, the I I too had asked for that statement, and the the quote that I had received was "City-owned water and sewer are not good for citizens, but for business recruitment as well." So the "as well" means in addition to, the way I understood that, meaning that not city and water are not good for citizens only, but but there's an "as well" or an addition to something. So it it as read, it it looks like this grammatically doesn't show what it said. But with that being said, right now currently, the 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 setup that we've had since the charter was created in nineteen oh one, the city doesn't own the water and sewer process. That's why we have a board. That's what we're voting on tonight. They wanted to keep it separate, the management of it away from politics. So in a way, the structure that we have, if this was city-owned, we wouldn't be talking about PWC. It would be the city council's decision.
And Mayor, respectfully, I understand that, and that's your determination.
Yeah, that's.
We don't know what the applicant's was, and that statement as presented, you know, like I said, you know, there's there's a play of words and understanding. And the way that statement is written on the application is a concern for me.
Gotcha. Councilmember Wright?
The way the application statement was written is a concern to me as well. But when you look at the grammar in which it was, in the text in which it was spoken, when he says "as well," that means also. So you're getting ready to make a a judgment call on what may not be correct grammar versus what the person really feels in his heart is right. And so when you, when you use the word "as well," it means also. Also what? It 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 means business and it means residential. And and so I I don't see a the the big issue in that at all. He's a very educated man, very experienced man, and I know him well. I've served with him in the military and in civilian sector as well, and I saw him in action. And I know he has a heart for the people. I know that for for fact. So if 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 you you feel uncomfortable with that, and my question is, what was the vote that came out of the committee?
It was three-two consensus.
It was three-two. So when you when you look at.
As well as everything else on here.
Right, as well as everything else. So all of that comes to us on a three-two vote. So I I don't know why we would pick that particular phrase, one word, versus using "as well" to be a complete statement of cooperation and inclusion. That's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Waddell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to call for the vote.
Okay. All right, there's a motion on the floor. It's called a question, motion on the floor. By Councilmember Dawkins, seconded by Councilmember Davis to accept the Appointment Committee recommendations as presented. Council, those voting in favor, hands? All right, those voting opposed? Councilmembers Waddell?
Red.
Councilmembers Ingram?
Red.
All right. Motion is five to five, Madam Clerk. Those voting in favor? Councilmen Davis, Dawkins, Wright, Colvin Hare. those voting opposed, Councilmembers Kinston, Banks McLaughlin, Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, Ingram, and Waddell. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make an alternate motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we vote on the block of applicants as presented and isolate the PWC board for an up-down vote.
Second.
All right, it's a motion by Councilmember Waddell to, is, Councilmember Waddell, was that to approve with the exception of, or is that to vote with the exception of?
Yes, that is to approve with the exception of the Public Works Commission and to vote on that with a separate up-down vote.
Okay. Yeah, we've, we've done about every version of this, but this, there's a motion by Councilmember Waddell to approve the block with the exception of PWC. There's a second by Councilmember Ingram. Discussion on the motion. Counsel, I'll look to you for those in favor of that motion. Okay, Councilmembers Ingram?
Green.
Councilmember Waddell?
Green.
Also voting in favor was Councilmembers Hans, ladies, Councilmembers Banks McLaughlin, Councilmembers Kinston and Mayor Pro Tim Jensen, five-five.
Mr. Mayor, do I understand this now, we'll go back to the Appointments Committee?
Well, we need direction from the council to do so, and whatever actions take.
May I make a motion that we send this back to the Appointments Committee for deliberation?
All right. It's a motion by Councilmember Davis to return this to the Appointments Committee, is there a second? Is there a second? Motion to return, dies with lack, with the, lack of a second, for lack of a second. All right. So council, we have this item, ma'am?
I just want to ask a clarifying question. So since those motion could, could potentially, we go back to the motion of approving the slate with the exception of PWC for the up-down vote, because as of right now, it's in the wind.
Well, you can make a motion for anything that's supported, so if that's a motion that you're making.
That's the question, thank you.
Okay. All right. So council, one of two items, either it can be tabled to come back to the next meeting. The meeting can be continued with this item remaining to the next meeting. Or since it failed to go back to committee or to move forward, I think taking it back to committee is different from tabling it. Tabling it is you bring it back to the council at the very next meeting.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Councilwoman Wright and Mayor Pro Tim Jensen?
I think at this point, everything is gridlocked. So the question on the floor was Councilwoman Kinston's concern about the statement that was made by the, by the appointee. I think it would make sense, or not the appointee, but.
Applicant?
The applicant. I think it would make all the sense in the world to go back to the applicant to find out what he meant by what he wrote. You have to give him that opportunity to express it, and that, that makes all the sense in the world to me to hear it from, you know, the horse's mouth and see what his real meaning was.
Well, if, let me say this.
If that was the only concern.
Let me say this, so, so council, the tabling it means to continue to the meeting that is the, what is this, thirteenth, so twenty-seventh? Gives the opportunity to do whatever, do Dylan's homework you want to do, whether it's the question, clarification, whether it's something else. That's, that could be a part of that, but I, I mean, it may or may not be just that issue for those voting opposed, so. But that's a good suggestion. Mayor Pro Tim Jensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I am going to ask to make a motion, and I'm going to repeat myself, and everybody's going to say we voted on, that we vote on the slate with the exception of PWC. And with my motion, I would like that on the slate that we have to go back on boards and commissions, if we bring it back, there will be five applicants eligible that maybe that we can have the council meet with them, because PWC seems to be a contentious appointment that we always do. But I think PWC is the one that we're having questions with, and for us not to go ahead and do the full slate is just taking up people's time and energy. Because the question is PWC, it's not the other seventeen boards and commissions. So as we're sitting here gridlocked, we're not Washington, this is boards and commissions. We're better than this. We have, we have questions on one, let's get the other ones done. That's all I have to say, that was my motion.
All right. So it's a motion by Mayor Pro Tim to approve with the exception of PWC as stated.
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that.
Okay, second by Councilmember Waddell. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes, those in favor of that? All right. Those voting in favor, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, Jensen, Councilmember Kinston, Councilmembers Ingram, and Waddell?
Green.
Green.
All right, motion fails. All right, council, so we're at a point where we can table this for the twenty-seventh, and give you an opportunity. All right. You had a question, Councilmember Banks?
No, that's not.
All right, all right, so it's a motion by Councilmember Dawkins, seconded by Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, any discussion on the motion? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes to bring this back on the twenty-seventh, meeting on the twenty-seventh. All right. Those voting in favor, Councilmembers Davis, Dawkins, Banks McLaughlin, Wright, Jensen, Colvin, and Hare. Those voting opposed, Councilmembers Kinston, Councilmember Waddell?
Red.
Councilmember Ingram?
Red.
All right, motion carries, Madam Clerk, come back on the twenty-seventh. Motion adjourned? All right, y'all have a good evening.